We're a couple of minutes, we'll be. Got it. You good upstairs? Eliana, you good? Ready? All righty, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Thursday, September 5th, 2019. If everybody can rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, Chief Buchanan, if you'll do the honors for us.
Chief, remember what I told you, chief, you can get out of this easy. Like to bow your heads in the moment of silence.
Now, in all fairness to everyone, I warned him that before I left I was going to do this to him, but I guess he didn't realize he was going to be the next meeting.
He still showed up, huh? Yeah. If you'd like to pray, please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the wonderful things you give us and for being a great God. We ask that you continue to provide us with your wisdom and guidance, keep us safe each and every day. We ask that you take care and watch over those that were lost loved ones in the Bahamas and help them recover over the next several many months, God. Again, we thank you for everything you give us and thank you for keeping us safe. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, chief. I also should mention to everybody, I mean, I pointed out Brian because it was his birthday, but our entire staff spent, everybody, all the staff, spent two or three days preparing for what turned out thankfully to be a non-event, but they had the city ready. Chief Buchanan, it was your first time doing this as chief, so you were drinking water from a fire hose, literally, but great job. And Chief Coleman, of course, great job. And to everyone at the staff, you're all ready if something happens. So it's always amazing, folks don't realize what goes on to put that EOC together and to get everything ready here in the city. So again, kudos to everyone. I will call the meeting to order now. Again, it's the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Thursday, September 5th, 6:32 PM. We have all members of council present this evening. Our first item of business this evening is going to be our budget hearing, that is to adopt the fiscal year 1920 tax rates and the budget. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cobb for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the council to conduct a public hearing to adopt the tentative millage and the tentative budget for fiscal year 2019-20. The tentative FY18 budget is balanced using the recommended tentative millage rate of 5.1145 mils or $5.11.45 per thousand of assessed value for the city's operations. The debt service for the 2003 general obligation bond issue will be set at the tentative millage rate of 0.1675 mils or 16.75 cents per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. The total millage rate, the operating millage rate of 5.1145 plus the general obligation bond millage rate of 0.1675 is 5.282. This is the same millage rate that was in the FY18-19 budget. The tentative millage rate will result in $14,242,469 in revenue to support the general fund. Budgeting at 95% as allowed by Florida statutes, the general fund budget will increase $1,056,947 as compared to the FY18-19 adopted general fund budget. The tentative millage will result in a citywide tax increase of 5.10% above the rollback rate of 4.8663 mils. The proposed budget is $76,483,552 net of inter-fund transfers. It is the culmination of the work of the city council in the March, May, June, and July work sessions. These work sessions promoted open discussion of all the issues facing the city. We appreciate the council's input and direction provided during those work sessions. The proposed budget, just to give you some highlights, it maintains the FY18-19 levels of service. It funds the debt service for fiscal year 1920. There's a 3% salary increase for general employees. It funds the city's commitments to the police and fire bargaining agreements. It funds a new school resource officer, a new police officer, a fire inspector, a building custodian, and a park ranger. It funds the vehicle replacement fund. It funds a replacement fire rescue unit. It funds public safety equipment needs, parts equipment needs, IT capital needs, utility capital needs, and it funds an update to the city's comprehensive plan. Finally, council, it complies with the city's minimum 15% reserve fund balance policy, and to be honest, it exceeds that policy. It is recommended that the city council read Resolution 3797-19 and 3798-19 by title only, conduct a public hearing on the tentative millage rates and the tentative budget, adopt the tentative millage rate.
Sorry about that, Brian. We have a little concert going on up here.
No worries. And then schedule a second and final public hearing for Monday, September 16th, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This time, I'd like to open up the public hearing on the tentative fiscal year 2019-20 millage rates and budget. First, I need to state, as Mr. Cobb already did, that the tentative millage rate of 5.1145 mils is an increase of 5.10% over the rollback tax rate of 4.8663 mils. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing portion. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on this? I have no written requests. Seeing and hearing none, I am going to close the public comment and ask, well, Mr. Colbert, welcome. How are you tonight, sir?
I'm fine, thank you.
That is terrific. Mr. Colbert, will you do us the honor and read the title of the tentative military levy resolution number 3797-19?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This resolution is entitled a resolution establishing the tentative millage rates to be levied for fiscal year 2019-2020 by the city of Oviedo. City government adopting the tentative millage rates for the 2019-2020 fiscal year for the city of Oviedo at the overall rate of 5.2820 mils with 5.1145 mils for the city's operations and 0.1675 mils for payment of the 2003 general obligation bond issue, expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent providing for implementing administrative actions, a savings provision, scrivener's errors, conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Colbert. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the tentative millage levy resolution number 3797-19, setting the millage rate at 5.1145 mils, which is 5.10% higher than the rollback rate of 4.8663 mils, and combined with the general obligation bond issue of .1675 mils makes the overall millage rate at, sets the overall millage rate at 5.2, excuse me, 5.2820.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Henkin, you have the floor.
Nope, everything looks good.
Deputy Mayor Pollock?
Looks good.
I'm fine.
Mr. Concert promoter?
I'm good.
You're good? All righty. Keith?
It's good. I'm just looking at the trends here. This is exactly the same total millage rate as it has been since 2014. It's allowing us to transfer some of the savings from the bond obligation into the general fund so that we can catch up on some of the things that Brian just mentioned, and I think this is a very good trend for us. Good job, staff.
Great, thank you. Well, I'm just going to say, because it's obviously the last time after 20 years of doing this that I'll be reading this, and we still have a little bit more to go, but what I'm most proud of is that millage rate is less than the day I started. And we have 10 times the amenities in this city than we did when I started. And that millage rate was 5.335, and we didn't have a general obligation bond. That was just for general funds. So at 5.1145 millage rate, we're less than 20 years ago with a lot more in this city. So kudos to staff, because like I said earlier, they do all the work, they get everything done around here, they keep it lean and mean, don't listen to anybody who goes around, it's the season, and tells you that there's fat in this budget. There is no fat in this budget, and it's all thanks to everybody that you see to my right. So great job by all. Anything else for the good of the order? Motion on the table is to adopt Resolution number 3797-19. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now to meet state statute, I'm going to bore everybody one more time. The tentative operating millage rate is now set at 5.1145 mils, which is 5.10% higher than the rollback rate of 4.8663 mils, and combined with the general obligation issue of .1675 mils, the overall millage rate is 5.2820 mils. So with that being said, the quiz will start in two minutes. Did you catch all that, Judith? Judith, what's a millage rate?
Overall, 5.28.
You can be a councilperson. Great job. All right, moving along. I'll ask you what the increase was, if you'd like. 5.1. All right, moving along, we have, the next part of our hearing is to adopt the budget. So, Mr. Colbert, if you could read Resolution number 3798-19 by title only for us, please.
This resolution is entitled a resolution adopting the city of Oviedo's tentative annual operating budget for 2019-2020 fiscal year, beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent providing for implementing administrative actions, a savings provision, scrivener's errors, conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Colbert. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution number 3798-19, adopting the fiscal year 2019-2020 tentative annual budget of $76,483,552 net of inter-fund transfers.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Henkin, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just waited to make the comments on this one, and you kind of hit me with what I wanted to say, but, you know, so much gets spun on social media about tax increases and all of this craziness that you read. That's why I really don't like Facebook, and, but I do see much of it. But when I started, you're correct, it was the same when you were here three years or four years before me, but 5.335 was our tax rate. It's 5.28. You know, you can spin it any way you like it. You know, if I asked most people what the rollback rate was, they wouldn't know what it was, but the rollback rate is very simply the rate we would charge to produce the amount of tax we had the previous year. But that doesn't work. We have to say that by statute, but everybody's house went up. What do we go up, 9%, 10% this year?
Yeah, nearly, a little over 10, I think it was. Or just under 10? Just under 10.
So of course, your house, your taxes are going to go up a little bit. It looks like we raise taxes, but as the mayor said, you know, when you keep the rate, you know, it's been 14 years that I was here and him 20 years. I mean, it's lower now than it was then with all this other stuff that we have. And I just say this for the, for the people that are going to come up here in a couple weeks to take our spot. Don't let anybody tell you that, you know, where we got a lot of fat here. We got a lot of stuff for very good value. And Jerry, you know, one thing I always want to give you kudos on is refinancing all our debt when the rates were low. Jerry went through each and everything that we, that we owed, all our debts for things that we have. We hear a lot, oh, the city's in so much debt. We hear one particular candidate loves to throw that around. Well, yeah, well, the voters approved it all. Most of it, anyway. And, you know, it's like, it's like a family. You need a mortgage, you need a house, you need things. That's all going to be coming off. So in a couple of years, you guys that are going to come up here in a couple of weeks, you're inheriting a very good financial situation, so, and I think most of you see that. So, staff, again, this is the last budget I'll do. They've all been, been great, even the ones that we had to do in the challenging times, but it, you know, it's been a pleasure, you know, working with you all on these budgets, and this one really is excellent as well. So you guys are in good hands coming up here in a couple of weeks, so it's all good.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Just want to say thank you for putting this together. You know, Jerry, Kelly, you're, I mean, y'all did a fantastic job doing this this year, and this budget is sustainable going into the future, because I try to look a few years out and seeing, you know, just not the current year. And I'm really impressed with it, and I think we can continue with this going forward, and thank you so much for putting it together and being able to keep the level of service that we, the citizens are used to.
Councilman Chudnow.
Having worked on the other side of the budget for 10 years, all the directors do a lot of work, is looking at their budget, keeping it lean, making sure that it balances, and working finance had always been a, had always been a pleasure, so it's a good job by everybody.
Great. Councilman Britton?
Good. I already said it.
Yep, well, Jerry, our reserves are sitting at, what, about 18%?
21.
21. 21%. And policy's only 15%. And that's just general fund reserve. That's not all the enterprise fund reserves. I'll hit on the, on the debt, because that is something that is a little bit annoying when we see that number thrown around. $55 million of the debt that the city has is income-producing. So everybody needs to remember that, and by income-producing, that 55 million in debt is the wastewater plant, the water plant, the reclaimed water lines, things of that nature. So the rates more than cover that debt. Then the other part of the debt, so Oviedo on the park, and as Councilman Henkin pointed out, that was voter-approved, it's a general obligation bond, and then what's left is some firehouses, some parks, well, public works, a lot of that's wrapped into the wastewater, but that's all. Your city's in great shape, folks. Again now, because this will be, well, we'll get one more swipe at this in a couple of weeks, but when I started, our overall budget, overall, was less than $20 million. I mean, that, that was the whole entire budget around here when we started. When Keith and I were on LPA together back in 1999, I don't even think it was $20 million. Brian, was it? Probably not. Darn close to it.
I would say it's probably in that range.
Yeah, it was right in that range, because I just remember, I remember a general fund being, you know, 10, 11 million dollars total for the whole entire city. It's 30-some-odd million dollars now. So it's amazing the changes that we've been blessed and humbled to see. But that being said, we do have a motion on the table to adopt Resolution 3798-19. Is there anything else for the good of the order before I call the question? Hearing and seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor of the motion to adopt, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we're going to close the public hearing on the first reading of the millage rates and the budget, and like I just alluded to, we're all going to get to do this again. So I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule the second public hearing for Monday, September 16th, 2019, at 6:30 PM here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, and I think I mentioned at approximately 6:30 PM.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the motion to schedule the second public hearing for September 16th, 2019, 6:30 PM here at Oviedo City Hall. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, there we go. We'll get to do this all over again. All righty, so that takes care of the budget public hearing and the tax rates. We are going to move on to the second item on our agenda, which are ceremonial items. We do have none of those. Third item is the approval of the minutes for August 19th, 2019, which was, 2019, excuse me, which was a regular session. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any discussion on the minutes from August 19th, 2019?
Looks good.
Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to the public comment portion of our meeting. I have no written request. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council on any item on the agenda or not? Sure, come on up. Name an address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Amanda Day, Executive Director of BikeWalk Central Florida, and really here just to thank you. Part of a resolution tonight that you'll be adopting is joining the Best Foot Forward for Pedestrian Safety Coalition, and I'm here to thank you for participating and joining this, this movement. It was started back in 2012, really through MetroPlan Orlando, to start that behavior change and trying to get more drivers to stop for pedestrians in crosswalks and getting more pedestrians to use crosswalk. And the main focus is looking at it from an engineering perspective, so working with you and your team of, you know, paint on crosswalks to location of crosswalks to the Oviedo Police Department, who has been tremendous as we're starting to build this coalition, of where to enforce the driver yield laws and also warn people and pedestrians of illegal crossing. And then the education component, too, is what of, we'll be doing really on behalf of you, is going out to schools and really trying to educate people about the law. So I just want to thank you so much for joining the BFF family, and really want to thank Oviedo Police Department, too, and I look forward to working with all of you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say that sitting on MetroPlan, it has been an issue at the forefront of MetroPlan for many years, and the question, as was pointed out, is really educating folks to go use the sidewalks. When we look at the data at MetroPlan that we see, something in the 90 percentile or more of the car-to-pedestrian accidents happen when somebody is illegally crossing a road. That's when they occur. At the crosswalks, everybody is safe because they're controlled. So it's how do we change the mindset of folks to walk that little extra distance? And no, we can't have a crossover bridge, you know, or a flyover bridge every 100 feet. That's not going to happen, but, you know, it's our pleasure to join, and I'm sure the police department's going to do an excellent job writing jaywalking pictures, so. That's priority number one. That's what I, I'm reading it right here. That's the first part of the resolution. All righty, so we have public comments still open. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to address the council? Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public comment and move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items number five through 13 on our agenda this evening. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Councilman Henkin, you have the floor.
Yeah, we have just a couple of things in here, but one thing that just stood out was the, I wanted to just mention was the agreement with the school board to fund our resource officers, and that's a good, good program we have, and I just want to acknowledge, this is one of the best ones right there. Matt Bronghile is one of our resource officers, and I have to tell you, he is, he has become, I don't even have the words, but I guess beloved doing his job as many of us are, but Matt, you know, you're doing a great job out there. You're here, I would recognize the other ones if they were here, but it's not an easy job taking care of all those kids.
You only like him because he's that partner with Gina.
Well, no, but I'm just saying, I get to see it, but they all do a great job, but it's not an easy job, the stuff you have to do. So you and all your fellow resource officers, thank you very much, and just wanted to recognize you because you were here.
That's awesome, you are right about that. Who is my second?
I was.
Councilman Britton, you have the floor.
I'm good, but I'd like to ask Brian if you can get with me. I'm just getting off the boat, literally, but I didn't get a chance to look at the dispatching agreement. Could you give me a few minutes later on in the week or next week and go over that with me?
You have to.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilman? Councilman Chudnow?
I'll go to Councilman.
Same thing, okay. Deputy Mayor?
All right, well, I just had a couple, couple items on the, one was on the dispatching and one was on SRO, and I did bring them up today. I sent an email out just to discuss it a little bit to, to the chief. The SRO, that 50% that we pay for, for the officers, is that, is that what Seminole County Sheriff's Department pays as well to their, for their officers?
I'm sorry, chief, can you just come on up? Farmer's giving you the eye. Or she's going to run a microphone over to you, one or the other.
If I could just digress for a minute. Councilmember Henkin, the principal at Barton, I talked to her the other day, said that Officer Brad Gale was the finest school resource officer she's ever had the pleasure to work with.
That's the words I was looking for, and he really needs to be recognized, because we've heard great things, but he is exceptional.
That's her words, not mine. I mean, she was very, she's very thrilled he's there.
There you go.
To my understanding, everybody in Seminole County, every SRO that was in place before last year, 18 months ago, is paid at the 50% rate. The ones that have been appointed after, after the Parkland shooting, the state has contributed the other 50%.
Because I was just, I was just curious, because if, I mean, I'm not saying to remove our officers from the school, but if our officers weren't there, Seminole County would have to step in and place officers in the school, correct?
Correct, and they get reimbursed at the same rate.
And they would reimburse, okay. I just want to make sure that, you know, there's, there's no room for negotiation there, because our officers spend a lot of time in the schools, and, and I'm sure it's more than 50% of their time is in the schools, and so I just want to make sure that the school board is reimbursing us appropriately for that.
Okay.
And then the other item I had was on the dispatch services. This year, I understand, I mean, we're, you know, we're, we've got a new contract, and I believe it renews every year, correct? Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir.
Going forward, I would, I would like to do some analysis on the dispatch services to make sure that we're not continually paying Seminole County for something that we could start to bring back in-house at a, at a, at a less cost to the city. That we need to really, really look at that and see, I mean, our, our city's growing and our, our police department's growing, and, and we may want to look at bringing that back in-house.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
Anything else?
So that means make sure the new police station is, is designed to have that capacity?
If that's the wish of the council, I'll be happy to make sure that happens.
Okay. Well, if we're going to have a quick debate on this, the only thing I think you're all going to find is it'll be millions of dollars to bring it back in, and about $700,000 or $800,000 you'd operate it, which is why we outsourced it in the first place. Chief Chudnow was on record as objective when he was the chief.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to touch on the SRO contract.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to touch on the SRO contract. Having our officers in the schools is not just for, is for the protection of, of students, but it gives our officers that, that day-to-day contact with students, especially at the middle and high school. They get information that stuff happens at off, off-campus, that then gets transmitted back to other beat officers. So having them in the schools is well worth the 50% penalty for those. And Seminole County is, is way ahead of other counties in the state with officers in all the schools, the elementary schools, that, that's now mandated by the state. A Seminole County in Oviedo have, have been in, is it way ahead of that for five, six years?
All the schools, I think it's a bit about five, yeah.
It's been about five years. Dispatch, all I see is the price keeps going up, and my understanding is the services keep getting reduced. At one time, we had a dispatcher, a dispatching the officers for calls, and a dispatcher solely for information, running data. That's no longer the case. Is that correct?
We share the Bravo channel, which is the information channel, teletype. We share one with Castleberry at the present time. The primary channel's still operated by a dispatcher.
My concerns with the dispatch contract is there's no insight in cost. There's nothing in that that says it's going to be capped amount per year, it's going to be capped amount for the, the duration of, it's an open checkbook, and I have some concern about that, specifically when the service is not what it was when we started a dispatch through the county. And that's something that I think that, that, that needs to be addressed.
Okay. You don't feel the service is the same as it was?
They've had to change due to staffing issues. They've had to change some of the delivery of services. Currently, when we, when we initially moved dispatch to Seminole County, there was a dispatcher for the Alpha Channel and dispatcher for Bravo Channel, one for teletype, one for primary. Throughout this past couple of years, due to staffing levels, they've had to, to reduce that. Currently, we are sharing the Bravo Channel, the teletype channel with Castleberry.
Okay.
And Altamont and Lake Mary do the same. I think Sanford has one dedicated to them to their volume of calls.
Well, you know, Sheriff is, Sheriff Lima has always been a friend of Oviedo's. I'm sure that if we...
We've had plenty of discussions about it. It wasn't a surprise. They, we, this wasn't just tossed upon us. It was discussed. And quite frankly, we're still in the evaluation stage, because that's what we, I think we had a three to six month evaluation stage, see if it's going to work. If there's, is too many issues, then we were going to look at something else. But currently, that's the way it, the way it is.
Well, thank you, Chief. Well, Councilman, former Chief Chudnow, for bringing that to our attention. And thank you, Chief Coleman, for answering the questions. I'm sorry, Chief, just before you go, any other questions for the chief?
No.
No?
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, you still have the floor.
That's all I have.
Alrighty. Just one quick thing. I'll, with the school resource officers, Mr. Cobb and the city manager of Sanford are going to, I think, sit down and have some conversations eventually, perhaps with the, with the school board, because we're the two largest cities with the most schools, and we have to furnish the most officers. And now I believe you want to put a sergeant in charge of everything, and it's a little fuzzy on whether they pay for that sergeant or not. Is that...
So far, the answer's no.
Right. Well, you and Norton will sit down, and I'm sure, be able to work all, all of that out. So, about to answer your question, there are some talks going on.
Okay.
On, on some of the issues. Alrighty, so we've hammered out any issues that everybody had with the consent agenda without having to pull an item off, so that is awesome. Is there any other discussion on the consent agenda?
Good.
Patrick, great job. I see we have a grant fund application in there for almost a million dollars for the Geneva realignment. Well, it had your, your handiwork written all over it as I was reading it. So, I could tell it wasn't Brian eyes, so great job. But we'll see, see if that can go through. Alrighty, I will call the question on items five through 13, which are the consent agenda this evening. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Give me just a moment here, I will catch up to everybody. And we will get on to our first public hearing, which is ordinance number 1686, puppy mills. Mr. Colbert, can you read this by title only for us, please? Thank you, Amanda.
Yes, sir. This ordinance is entitled an ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida, relating to the retail sale, sale of dogs and cats in public places, puppy mills and kitten factories, providing for definitions, providing for conditions and restrictions and other requirements, providing for penalties, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, as well as the correction of scrutiny errors, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Colbert. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us?
Thank you, Mayor. At your July 17th, 2019 meeting, council gave this direction to develop an ordinance that would regulate, or actually prohibit the sale, retail sale of dogs and cats that came from what are known as puppy mills and kitten factories. The ordinance that is before you tonight creates that prohibition and also requires that if, if these, if puppies and kittens are sold, it should be from Humane Society, rescue missions, those types of nonprofit agencies. It also does not allow for the sale of dogs and cats on public right-of-way. So there won't be folks pitching a tent and selling it outside, outside of their car. The good news is, is that we only have one pet store in Oviedo, and their company policy is that they do not, they do not retail sell dogs and cats from puppy mills or kitten factories. This also brings us in line with the ordinance that was adopted by Seminole County. Unfortunately, this part of the county ordinance, we will not be able to rely on Seminole County Animal Enforcement to enforce this ordinance. This will be relied on with code enforcement and the police department. But the good news about it is, this is more of a business regulation than it is an actual go and confiscate, you know, animals. So that's the good news about it, is that it's more of a business regulation than it is anything. It's recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1686.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This time, I will open up the public hearing. I have no written requests. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address city council on ordinance number 1686? Don't all get up at once. Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1686.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
This is great. It puts us in line with Seminole County and what they're doing. And, and I feel like it's, it's the right thing to do for, for the animals as well.
You good?
Yes, I'm good.
Councilman Chudnow?
Nothing to add.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
Good. Can we name this the Bob Pollock Ordinance? No? Alrighty. Alright, so the motion on table is to adopt ordinance number 1686. Is there any other discussion for the good of the order? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number 15. Item number 15 is Resolution number 3802-19, approval of the amended certificate of vesting for the Oviedo Pharmacy and Drugstore LLC. Mr. Cobb, please enlighten us on this one.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to approve an amendment to a certificate of vesting. It is to extend the term of the certificate of vesting. That is the only change that's being requested of you. All the other conditions of approval that are part of the certificate of vesting are not being affected by this request. Back in 2017, the city council adopted an ordinance that regulated the location of pharmacies. And it, one of the things that it did was, in the New Downtown Zoning District, Downtown Mixed Use, New Downtown Zoning District, it made a pharmacy a prohibited use. The applicant had already begun the development process to build a pharmacy on property that he owns on State Route 434, within that, in that zoning district. And so at that time, he requested a certificate of vesting to preserve what he had, to preserve a pharmacy for his property before the, under the regulations, before the ordinance was adopted. And so on October 2nd, 2017, the council adopted a resolution that approved the certificate of vesting that would allow the pharmacy to be located on the property. And what, some conditions that the council put on the certificate of vesting was that they had to have a certificate of occupancy within two years. They also put the condition on there that there could not be a marijuana, medical marijuana dispensary on the property. That it could only be used for a pharmacy. The applicant is requesting that the certificate of vesting be extended to two years from this date. The applicant has begun the development process. So one of the things that the applicant did in between council's approval of certificate of vesting and now, is that he purchased additional property. So now he owns two lots, and he wants to develop those lots and have shared infrastructure. That was something that wasn't being considered back in 2017. That gave him another level of approval that he had to obtain from the city. Now, he's, since he's sharing infrastructure between the two properties, he's now in a master land use plan development agreement situation, in addition to the site development order and the architectural development orders that he has to go through, building permits, certificate of occupancies. He's been working with the staff since 2017. If you remember, that you've already approved an architectural design order for Lot 1, which is where the pharmacy will be approved, pharmacy will be located. We also have, tonight, we have the master land use plan that'll be coming up later on in the meeting. So the staff, since he, the staff believes that he has been progressing in good faith to this point. He still has to get a site development order, he still has to get a building permit, and he still has to construct it, and he still has to get a, a certificate of occupancy, which there's no way that he can do that by October of this year. And so the staff is recommending that the city council extend the term of the certificate of vesting to two years from this effective date. So it's recommended that city council conduct a public hearing and adopt Resolution number 3802-19.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is the applicant present? Do you have anything to add that Mr. Cobb hasn't already filled us in on? If you do, come on up.
I don't have much to add.
Name and address for the record first, I'm sorry.
Ian Tasman, 5816 North Dean Road, Orlando, Florida.
Thank you.
I don't have much to add. We have been working diligently with this, me and my father, trying to get this to go through. We've had numerous meetings with the development committee. Obviously, it's difficult for two people not to come up with excuses, but for me and my father to put all this together. Two years was obviously our goal. That kind of got put on the, it became impossible. We had to purchase the lot next door to help with. As Brian had mentioned, with our driving and parking and getting everything kind of organized, it's very difficult, and it's a long process, and it's expensive. And I am paying for all of this. And I don't have just an abundance of finance to put it all out, so it is something that does take time. So I am asking for you guys to please extend the certificate. Steph, I believe Teresa and Jay support our request, and they've been great in the whole process that we've been going through.
Great. Any questions for you?
Good.
I have one. You said you had to buy the lot, or you wanted to buy the lot?
No, I wanted to buy the lot.
Okay. So by buying the lot, you created more problems for yourself and you extended your term?
I guess, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alrighty, I will open up the public hearing on this item. I have no written requests. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council on Resolution number 3802-19? Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 3802-19.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Councilman Henkin, you have the floor.
Nope, I just hope you get smoother Cs ahead. You know, things happen, and it's not, it's a crazy business climate out there. So, you know, good luck to you, keep it going, don't give up, you'll get there. It's all good.
Councilman Britton?
No question.
Deputy Mayor?
I had a little bit of heartburn over this, because we, we sat here and, and when, you know, when this was first approved, going back and forth, and we came up with that two-year time period. And, and nothing's happened, you know, visibly it's happened in that two-year period. And then I see this come up on the, on the dais to, to extend it for another two years. My biggest concern is, is nothing's going to happen over the next two years, and we're going to see it, or someone on council will, will see it again in two years. But, you know, I'm okay, I understand the situation, I'm okay with it. But, you know, for me, this is the last time. It needs to be done in two years.
Great. Anything else? Alrighty. Well, I'm, I'm not going to be as generous. You know, a little, little history on this. I mean, as Mr. Cobb said, they got caught in the medical marijuana rezoning pharmacies because of what the state pushed down on all the cities. As we know, the city of Oviedo approved medical marijuana facilities in our city, but we rezoned where pharmacies could go in order to keep those facilities in the major corridors. This one got exempted. Quite frankly, its location should never have been approved in my mind. So, that, that's step one. Step two, as Deputy Mayor Pollock pointed out, originally, we were only going to give you a one-year term. Mr. Tasman was up here, told us, give us two, we'll get this done. Well, it's not done. Now we hear that you decided to buy an extra lot to improve your project, make your profits larger. God bless you, it's America, it's capitalism, that's what it's all about, which is what delayed you, and now you want us to extend it even more. So, that, that's where I'm having the problem. You know, and, you know, I have, I have no problem stating that I was against it in the first place, the vesting. I compromised on two years, and now we're right back here where we started from. So I'd like to hear from Dr. Korea, if we could just please enlighten us, I mean, where are we in this process? Because, you know, the, the next thing we're going to do is, we're going to vest them, then we're going to approve a site development plan, and then, as the deputy mayor said, nothing's going to happen.
Well, if that happens, then the certificate of vesting would not be extended again. I will tell you, on our side, I cannot tell you, Mr. Mayor, how the project has evolved from the first pre-application we had with Mr. Tasman. He wanted to use the existing non-conforming structure that is on-site to, you know, renovate for a pharmacy and maybe a mixed use. I mean, we kind of convinced him that that was not a good idea, and so we had a lot of back and forth with them. And they ended up understanding that they have to bring, you know, an engineer to, to do the project. We have already an architectural plan approved, and it was a nice project. So we were happy with the project that we achieved. So at this point, I'm comfortable that they have done things that we requested. We had a lot of meetings, so it's not, not that nothing happened, but by, by the adjoining property, now they were in a situation, they want to share infrastructure, which for us is also a good thing. It's a planned thing, so we only have one driveway feeding two properties, so that's a good thing. And they would be required then to have a master land use plan and a development agreement. So that created a new step for the project. So at this point, we are comfortable that they have, you know, showed enough, you know, investment, and, and they are complying with all the things that we have been requesting and requiring per code to comply with what is needed to bring good development in the city. So that's why we, we thought that with the master land use plan, the architecture was already approved. The site plan is just waiting for the master land use plan and development agreement to be approved, so that staff can approve it, and then would be a building permit, a review, and then the construction.
Alrighty, let me ask a question. Which one of the two lots is vested for a pharmacy?
Just one.
Okay, just the one, not the new one?
No, the old one, yeah. It has not changed. And that is, so the terms of the certificate of vesting has not changed. And that is, so the terms of the certificate of vesting has not changed, have not changed. We just, we're just asking for the extension for the two-year period because now...
So the pharmacy can only be on the original lot which we vested?
Yes, only.
And the second, and the second lot that they decided to invest in is only going to fall under the...
Permissible uses.
Yeah.
New District A, yeah, the new downtown district, Subdistrict A.
Okay. So you couldn't have two pharmacies sitting next to each other?
No.
All right. Any other questions, Dr. Korea?
Yes, Mayor. Teresa, has there been any talk on that other lot that they bought what they want to put there or what's...
Well, they discussed with us maybe medical office, something that would be complimentary to the pharmacy, but they haven't brought anything in, so we don't, we don't know at this point. But it will have to be one of the uses that are permissible in the subdistrict.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for Dr. Korea? Mr. Tasman, I have some questions for you. Dr. Korea just stated that you want to possibly put a medical office on that second lot that's complimentary to the pharmacy. What does she mean by that?
Build a building there, have a pad, pad ready and sell it to someone who could put a building there.
Your pharmacy, what type of pharmacy are you intending on opening?
Can I do compounding, retail, MTM, veterinary medications out of there?
It's Florida law, but I need to ask the question, are you looking at putting a medical marijuana facility there?
No, we're not allowed to per our vesting and I would not want to put one there.
Okay. All righty, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Anyone else? All right, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All righty, is there any other questions for the good of the order? All right, we have a motion on the table to extend the vesting term for two years, which is the recommendation of staff. Based on everything that I've heard, I was going to ask for only a one-year vesting period, but it just doesn't seem like you're going to be able to get them ready in a year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before you call a question, Mr. Tasman, you come back up here for a second. I have, I have one question I want to ask you. You mind?
Okay.
What's your, what's your biggest issue you're having? I know you talked about, you know, finances, you know, small business, you know, we know things tariffs, crazy, the world situation, things are a little nutty right now. What's your, what's your biggest hurdle here to get this done?
It's, I know it's going to sound absurd. If I was Chick-fil-A, I could pay a million dollars and have engineering, architectural, photonic study, a turtle study, I could have all that done in two seconds. Unfortunately, we're hiring like local engineers, local architects, and they don't necessarily have the resources. We can't pay big enough companies that have the resources to get all these things done so quickly. So it's just a slow-moving process because we're handling it.
It's finance, it's really finance. If, if money was no object, you'd get it done in six months, a year.
You could get anything done if, if money was no object.
Well, listen, I mean, you know, working for, you know, work seems, small business around, you know, the country and everything, they have a little difficulty. I would just say this, I think you heard some of the frustration from some of the other council members. One's going to be here for many years to come to or leaving, but try to get this thing done. I know it's not easy and that's why, I knew what the answer was, that's why I asked you the question, I want everybody to hear. You know, sometimes you just don't have the money, but you're trying to build a business, trying to employ people, and it's just, it's rough out there right now, so. But, you know, understand, I can, I can just tell you, knowing the folks that are coming up here, five of them that are running, they're going to give you a hard time too, so try to, try to do it as quickly as you can.
Yes, sir.
I'm sympathetic because I deal with this every day, so, but just do the best you can.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Tasman? You're good?
Thank you.
All righty, any other questions for staff or for the good of the order before I call the question? All right, the motion on the table is to adopt resolution number 3802-19 as presented. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All righty, we have no first reading of ordinances, so we'll give you a moment to catch up, get up to item number 17. Item number 17 is resolution number 3795-19, non-statutory development agreement with an associated master land use plan for the pharmacy on the park. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this application affects the same property as the certificate of vesting. This is a request to approve a non-statutory development agreement and associated master land use plan for the pharmacy on the park property. The property is locate, it's two vacant lots, the approximately point zero, 0.85 acres. It's located on the east side of Central Avenue, which is State Route 434, approximately 930 feet north of Mitchell-Hammond Road. The property is designated downtown mixed use on the future land use map as well as downtown mixed use, new downtown Subdistrict A on the official zoning map. The non-statutory development agreement includes commercial uses permitted in the new downtown District A subdistrict on both lots, and it also allows the pharmacy on Lot 1 for the certificate of vesting. The uses allowed on Lot 2 will be those that will be allowed as permissible uses within the, within the zoning district. On April 1st, 2019, city council did approve an architectural design order for Lot 1. The applicant has also submitted a site development order for the development of the civil engineering part of the property. The non-statutory development agreement does include standards, it does have a limitation on the uses as described. It provides for the shared infrastructure such as access, stormwater, parking, those types of things. There is also traffic control. The floor area, the proposed gross floor area of the building on Lot 1 is approximately 2,356 square feet and the maximum proposed gross floor area on Lot 2 is 5,000 square feet. The lots will meet or exceed the minimum building setbacks of 25 feet for the front, 15 for the rear, and five for the rear, five for the side property lines. The site development order does have a height limitation maximum of 60 feet, since the property is located along the State Route 434 property. The architectural design order for Lot 1 is, has a building, has approved the building on Lot 1 for a 30-foot maximum height. The city attorney has reviewed the non-statutory development agreement and recommends approval. Staff has reviewed both the development agreement and the master land use plan and recommend approval. The land planning agency considered resolution 3795-19 at its August 20th, 2019 meeting and thereat recommended approval. It's recommended that the city council adopt resolution number 3795-19.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb, Mr. Tasman, do you have anything to add? All righty. What is the pleasure of council on resolution 3795-19?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 3795-19.
Second? All right, you have a motion and a second. Councilman Henkin, you have the floor.
The only thing I'll add with this is that when you finally do get this rolling, your building design is very nice. We saw that and it fits very, very good with our architectural standards. It's going to complement that corner there, so good job with that and that's all I have to add.
Deputy Mayor, you have the floor?
It, no, the, the building itself looks great, I just want to see it, so, so, you know, the sooner the, the better.
Bob has drugs he needs to buy, that's what he's telling me.
I'm getting older.
Councilman Chetna, or anything?
Nope.
Good. Councilman Britton? All righty. And honestly, Mr. Tasman, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, just trying to get you going, that's all. All right, is there any other questions for the good of the order before I call it? Nope? All righty, motion on the table is to adopt resolution 3795-19. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All righty, so moving along, we have no discussion items. Oh, did I skip over something? Item number 18. Item number 18, let's get over to this one. Sorry about that. Resolution number 3809-19, Buck Creek Pre-Annexation Agreement for a Senior Living Facility. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the council to approve a pre-annexation agreement with Principal Senior Living Group LLC. The subject property is located on the south side of County Route 419. It's approximately 5.31 acres. The property is currently in unincorporated Seminole County, part of the development program that the applicant is going through is that they need city utilities. Many years ago, the council adopted a resolution that said if you need city utilities, you need to annex into the, into the city and go through the city's development process. However, as part of the approval of that resolution, the, the council did include a clause that said if we have an economic development opportunity, in other words, not a residential subdivision, then we will consider those on a case-by-case basis. The applicant is proposing to construct a assisted living facility and is currently going through the county approval processes. The pre-annexation agreement does create the agreement that the applicant will annex into the city upon receiving a certificate of occupancy from Seminole County as well as be brought into the city's comprehensive plan and the city zoning map. There are some development agreements within that, mostly to maintain the approvals that they are receiving in the county. As the agreement specifically states, the city can only agree to process, so this agreement does not guarantee specific uses. The agreement will be held in escrow until such time as the annexation is brought forward. The staff has worked with the applicant to bring this forward. It is recommended that the council adopt resolution number 3809-19.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Axel, do you have anything to add?
My name is David Axel with Axel Real Estate, 1757 West Broadway Street, Suite 1, Oviedo, Florida. I do represent the property owner, C O D Holdings, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant Principal Senior Living Partners 6 LLC. I think I've been working on some form of project or another on this property for maybe 12 or 13 years. At one point, it was going to be a medical office complex and that was killed by the recession. There were a number of folks that tried to do single-family and it just wasn't really making sense, and I think we have a pretty ample supply of 50-foot lots floating around out here right now. So I actually encouraged the property owner a couple of years back to revisit the approval with the county, which was a specific site plan and targeted assisted living as a potential use. And I was very pleased that this buyer came forward. It's a very nice, single-story project, 72 rooms, 93 beds, so most of them are one-bedroom units. There's a, a small area that's, that's for memory care. We worked close with the staff. Although this doesn't come to you for an architectural design order, we did go through that same type of review process. I had the opportunity to impress upon this developer the types of materials to use and what the city sought. So there's, as you typically have in the architectural design orders, some deviation from the maximums as to stucco, but all four sides of this structure far exceed the requirement for brick. It's got one small fenestration deviation, but it's being reviewed as per office. There's not really a separate category of, of window counts for assisted living. So I think it's a pretty extraordinary project from the look, from the fit, to, to be in the city's community for a lifetime, and I appreciate your consideration tonight and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Axel. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Axel? Will we have him at the podium?
No.
And there's a rendering, I think, on the easel right over there.
Yes.
I have no written request to speak forms on this item, so I'll move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 3809-19.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Councilman Henkin, you have the floor.
You know, I look at this project, you know, it's like it's election season and Randy, I'm going to give you props on this, I saw your video about smart, balanced growth. This is the type of project that you want in the city. This is so needed, all of us someday may need this. I know we have some other facilities in the city, but being out there on the east side of the city, a good-looking project, and Dave, you are correct, we've looked at so many things for that property, this is a perfect project to put out there. Transition you right into that cemetery that you guys wouldn't give me, you know what I'm saying? It's the only thing I didn't get in 14 years, but anyway...
That's because most people...
I know, they get cream made and I know, we're all good, and I, and that is true, about 90% now.
Come on, now Dave just like curled up. What a waste of real estate, right, Dave?
Of courses and cemeteries.
I had till the first meeting in December to get you a cemetery.
Yeah, he's working on it.
There you go. You guys will all get that.
They've been working on that.
Hey, I just say, we, look, we got a hospital here from the cradle to the grave.
We have one right behind City Hall here.
Yeah, I know, but everybody can't go there. All right, enough of that, but anyway, this is, this is a terrific project, this is what you would call...
Wait a second, one second. Judith, is he invited to the cemetery right behind City Hall?
Oh, I'm good. There you go. Hundred percent. Thank you very much. But a very nice project, good, that's perfect.
All right. Who is my second? Bob, right?
Yeah, this project is great.
Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this project's great. You know, one of the things that we don't, we don't take lightly is annexation into the city. We don't want to look like we're trying to expand our borders, you know, but this fits in nicely. It's a little enclave into the city and, and this, this project and the annexation of it works well with, within the city.
Great. Anything else? Councilman Chetna?
I'm good.
Councilman Britton?
I'm good. I'm glad you can find a use for that lot. I know you've been working on it a long time. I've been sitting up here listening to you for a long time.
Who remembers when he was going to put the water tower on for the fire sprinklers? That was the best one, actually. But yes, I mean, you know, you have been working on this for a while. This is a, a great fit for the property. It's, it's perfect, it's a need in the community. Just so the community knows, we're, we're also working on some 55-plus communities as well for the, for the city. We have two different areas right now with two different developers who are looking at different types of product, rental product, condo products, so there could be more coming up on that in the, in the near future. So, you know, as we age, I mean, we have to have places for everybody. I mean, back in the 80s, it was a young community, we're still a young community, but we are, the mix is starting to change a little bit, so this, this is a perfect project and it's architecturally really nice, Dave, so great job as always. All righty, is there anything else on this?
I just have one question. If everything went right, how long would this be till it's done? If everything went...
Are we going to do two more years of vesting?
No. Right now, the, the plan is to try to get all the approvals wrapped up by the end of this year. You know how things go when you start getting into the holidays. I talked to the design engineers today, so the engineering had already been submitted to the county, to the city for utilities, to St. John's. I don't know if there are any city comments, but they're responding in about a week to St. John's and the county, so hopefully this will be under construction first quarter next year.
We know how difficult that county can be.
At times.
At times. All righty, anything else for the good of the order? Seeing and hearing none, the motion on the table is to adopt resolution number 3809-19. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion items, we have no discussion items tonight, but we do have a city manager's report. Brian? Again, happy birthday to Brian. Now that we're live on camera, it, it is Brian's birthday today and he is here as a trooper, but I hope you had a great day and hope you enjoy your long weekend.
It was a good day. The long weekend was a very stressful, mentally exhausting weekend.
I meant the one coming up.
Oh, okay.
I hope you enjoy the weekend, the longer weekend coming, oh, the holiday weekend. Whose holiday weekend got ruined? Was that hurricane like waking, like being chased by a turtle? I mean, that thing just sat there, with the poor people in the Bahamas.
That's my one report, Mayor. Believe it or not, we spent 10 days working on Hurricane Dorian, and I want to tell you about a wonderful staff. Talking about people stepping up, every department stepped up. This was Chief Buchanan's first storm as emergency management director. He took the reins, he ran with it. Now, his style was different from his predecessor, but he took the reins and he ran with it. Chief Coleman was right there as his second-in-command. I'm third on the depth chart, so I'm a little bit further down. But I saw the staff come together. I watched it firsthand in the E O C. I watched it out at the sandbag operation. I had the joy of working with our public works and recreation staffs at the sandbag operation on Saturday morning. I could only spend three hours with them, but I wish I could have spent the entire time. But to watch them, the dedication to our residents, the dedication to getting everything put together in order, the frustration, I told them in the beginning, I had two words for this storm: unprecedented and frustrating. I was frustrated beyond belief, because normally, two days, three days out, we know where the darn thing's going, and we didn't. We didn't know where it was going the night before. But I saw the level of effort, everyone rallying together, unprecedented coordination between the cities and the county. We were getting regular updates from the county, we had the city managers and the county managers set up a text group. We were texting each other constantly, leading up to and during the storm, asking each other questions, bouncing ideas. And so, I mean, everyone pitched in, it was a total team effort, and it was the type of exercise we needed, because if you remember last year, we were blessed, we did not have a storm. So we didn't activate last year. We needed an exercise like this to dust off the rust, and I just wanted to just tell you what a great job we did. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb, and again, happy birthday to you. Mr. Colbert, we don't get to see you much, but I hope all is well, and any report from legal?
All is well, and it's good to see you all, but I have no additional items tonight.
All righty. Is Mr. Group somewhere else this evening, because it's a Thursday evening?
He's in a different meeting, because you're meeting at an odd time, which conflicted with an existing one.
That happens every year for this meeting, so we get to see you at least once.
It's good to be here.
Thank you. Great to see you. All righty, so council members, let's see, Councilmember Chudnow, you're up first.
Well, just to briefly talk about the storm, this is the first storm since 1982 I was at home. It was very frustrating. I tried to stay busy, but it just wasn't happening, so it was just kind of weird being at home and not being out on the street or in the E O C, and it was kind of nice not having to worry about it, though.
I'm sure you have your uniforms still. You probably could have just put your uniform on and they...
Well, I did offer, I did offer assistance.
I am sure they would take your help.
Be happy to assist.
It would be one of the citizen-on-patrol uniforms.
Oh, Mayor, if I could, just for Chief, for former Chief Chudnow, we did have hot food this year.
Yeah, no. Chief White, I think, you know, he's got his parents and stuff, he has to take care of it. Chief Chudnow?
The only thing I can add, we had our groundbreaking for the Boys and Girls Club. Right as the storm lingered over the Bahamas on Friday, the weather broke for us, we had about 60, 65 people there for the groundbreaking. Hopefully, the renovations are gonna start within the next couple of weeks, and hopefully, Boys and Girls Club will be open by the start of school, gets back in January.
Awesome. That is great. They're gonna do it first, Chief, at the church.
Right. Antioch has been a great partner in this process. In fact, they're gonna have a, open a smaller version of Boys and Girls Club at the church for about 20 kids, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, and then we will be, when the renovations get done to the building at 55 Avenue B, we will be able to have about 60 to 65 kids at the club, and hopefully, the weather holds out, and we get the renovations done, and we'll be able to open by January.
Nice. That is a great job, Chief. You've been working on that for years. Congratulations. Anything else?
That's all.
Councilmember Britton, shall I say welcome back?
Yeah.
I won't steal your thunder.
But I'm glad to be back. My wife and I went on our 30th wedding anniversary cruise. We left the 25th of August for a seven-day cruise and got back today, 11 days after. But I knew everything would go good. We drove around the town, we got in today, and it looks great, and I know, I know staff stepped up, because they always do, so that's all I have, and I'm glad to be home.
Well, after four extra days at sea because of the storm, I can only imagine how rough that must have been.
Oh, it was just...
On a cruise ship and...
It was terrible out there in the Gulf of Mexico, I mean...
You know, just texting work, saying aye, you know, I'm not gonna be in, I have a pina colada in my hand.
Mm-hmm.
Well, welcome home. All righty, I'm up, I've got a few things I just want to go through real quick. Last week, we had an update on the cleanup efforts at Lake Jessup with Senator Simmons, and I think I'm happy to report that that does seem to be gaining some traction and getting some legs. Would you agree, Patrick? And it's gonna be millions upon millions of dollars for them to cut new channels, to get fresh water to come into the lake and clean the lake up, but the good news, what we, what we learned in that update is the lake is actually, with the one channel that they cut when they put the new bridge in many years back, the lake is cleaning up. I mean, it's amazing, it may not seem it as you go past it, I know it's got a lot of alligators in it, but the water samples are getting better and better and better, so that was positive news. And with an additional channel that they want to cut to filter more fresh water into the lake, because the lake doesn't really exit anywhere, they're hoping that that will, that will work, but I, the guestimate was 12 million, 15 million? 15? Yeah, so we got a little time to go on that, but thank you to Senator Simmons and Representative David Smith, who were both out at the meeting, and will take this up, up in Tallahassee come January when their session starts. Patrick, just, is there any update on the website? I know there's a couple of things in the work with works, with new agenda software, or Mr. Cobb can give the update, whatever, whomever would like to do it.
Thanks, Mayor. Council, last week, I believe, in the midst of all the hurricane preparation, we were able to come to an agreement with the document imaging portion. Sire, as you know, is the software we use now for the agenda and document imaging. They seem to be the only company out there that do both. Most companies out there either partner with another company, so that's made it a little difficult, but we have signed an upgrade agreement with Highland for that.
Is Highland who took over Sire?
Correct, but that's the document imaging portion of it. They are a leader in that field, but their agenda software, I don't want to say much, but they seem to be lagging...
They didn't meet your expectations.
They did not meet the expectations of myself, the IT director, and the city clerk, so we found another vendor that we're working with, and we've got an agreement close to being ready for you.
Great. All righty. Thank you, Patrick. I sent an email out the other day, and I might as well sort of announce this publicly, because it is gonna eventually hit the newspapers. There is a little dispute going on between Oviedo Medical Center and Florida Hospital over the use of the term "Oviedo ER." Oviedo Medical Center obviously was first in the city, they identified as Oviedo ER. When they opened up the ER, they trademarked the name. Florida Hospital is calling it Advent Oviedo ER. A lawsuit was filed, when did I send that to you guys? About a week ago? You were on your...
I just had it today.
Yeah, I think it was about a week ago. We were notified of it, so you're gonna hear that in the paper. I'm sure they'll report on it, but, you know, it's just one company protecting their name and their trademark, you know, a brand that they've built, and we'll see where it goes. UCF got off to an awesome start, it's 62 to nothing.
That a high school team they played, that was dreadful.
It was actually a decent game, it was a lot of fun. This weekend, they have F A U, and Patrick will have the flag flying first thing tomorrow morning.
It's already up, Mayor.
All righty. And Mr. Cobb, I've been requested, we need to have an ordinance that the UCF flag is flown before each game, because, you know, when I'm not sitting here, the community expects it, so if you can bring that forth, if I have the consensus of council, so we can keep the flag flying, that would be awesome.
Would you prefer an ordinance or a resolution?
Whatever you prefer.
A resolution would be much easier.
Then make it a resolution. An ordinance, I guess we have to advertise it and have like three hearings to fly a flag.
Yes.
Make it a resolution.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. With that being said, that's the end of my report, and, you know, we just have to pray for those poor folks in the Bahamas, because that could have easily been us. Deputy Mayor, you're up.
All right, I just, I just wanted to, you know, just praise staff again for the tremendous amount of work they did for the hurricane preparation. I stopped by the E O C and saw everybody working hard over there, and, you know, and just everybody coming together, and, you know, it's not a small feat to make sure that we're well-prepared, and our staff does an excellent job of doing that. The, and the sandbag pickup, 25,000 sandbags, was that the count? The largest in Seminole County. We ran out at 25,000. That's amazing, and...
I'm sorry, do we confirm that number? I saw an email going around. Is that a confirmed number? Because I did see it in a Seminole County report somewhere. All right.
I want to get the story out, sandbags. 25,000 is our estimate. We had 15,000 to begin with, we picked up an additional 10. We may have had a few hundred left at the end.
Oh, that's amazing.
Yeah, I mean, people would have seen the lines of cars, and they were backed up all the way to my office, which is a quarter mile down the road, I mean, consistently. I mean, when you think about it, divided 25,000 by 10, 2,500 cars, easily, easily accommodated.
Fine, plus we service all of eastern part of the county.
And it wasn't just Oviedo, it was truly other Geneva, people south of here, we were given every...
Those are the folks who are gonna flood, so they're gonna come to your...
We didn't turn anybody away, yeah.
And, and at least when my wife went and picked up sandbags, they were already filled, and they just were loaded in the vehicle.
Yeah, we had a full-serve and a self-serve section.
Yeah, so, I mean, so it was, you just drive up, pop your trunk, your, what was it, 10 sandbags in the trunk, and you're out. Like, that was amazing, for 25,000 to have the staff do that, just, just awesome.
Do we have an automatic hopper to load these things?
Not yet.
Not, you're going to have the 25,000?
This was all manual labor.
Is that the budget, Brian? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, understand, a lot of the 25,000 were, we had, those were people putting their own in their, you know, preparing their own, so it wasn't just us, it was residents as well.
Yeah, but that was, that was great.
We had actually two self-serve lines. There was one self-serve line where they just backed up their car and used their own, their own tools, and then we had another self-serve line where basically folks came up, and we had some pre-bags already, so we loaded them up, even though they, some of them used our shovels and our bags and loaded themselves. Then we had a full-serve line, it was primarily for the elderly, for disabled, and I think if women showed up on their own, you know, they could go into that line as well. It was very orderly, very, everybody was in good spirits, we had, we had a person come back and volunteer to work with us. I had two families ask, is there anything they could bring us? And I said, whatever you want to, and I don't know if they brought anything back, but they said they were going to. The three hours I was there, I think we served over 200 vehicles.
Yeah, that's a lot. Thank you, Bobby.
And also...
I didn't need to hijack you.
Yeah, and also, great job on, you know, working with the, with Republic and making sure that the garbage was picked up, so that people didn't have garbage for two weeks, so that was, that was a great compromise with them, so thank you.
Anything else, Bob?
That's all I have.
All righty, Councilman Henkin, you're up.
All right, just a couple of things, I'm just gonna echo real quick, you know, in times of great uncertainty, and that, where's it going, and wow, there was just a 220-mile gust in the Bahamas, I mean, you really, really mentally weighs on you, and I have to tell you, whenever the city is under stress, you know, I take great comfort, because I've seen it for so many years, the response of our staff, you know, I knew if something bad would happen, we saw it in Charlie, and Jeff and Dale, we knew you guys were there, and you know, that, even in such great anxiety, you know that your city will be there to pick you up when you're done, so that is a, a great job for you guys. Just on a lighter note, Jeff, that was an excellent invocation. I knew you had it in you, brother. You certainly did, so that was, that was excellent.
And you should be prepared, because I have about six or eight more meetings, so you never know.
There you go, the moment of silence always works, though, keeps you out of trouble, it's all good, whatever. Lake Jessup, you know, to all the candidates out there, for whoever may sit up there, I just want to tell you the power of this group when you don't give up. This Lake Jessup has been polluted forever. We've had a board member from the city council on this, friends of Lake Jessup, for years, and nobody did anything for years. So, they gave me this board position, these guys up here, I said, listen, let's take the ball and run with it, you know, we can't keep accepting this lake is polluted, and that's the way it is. So we, five of us all agreed, and Brian wrote the letter, we sent it to every senator and every congressman, hey, I don't know why you guys can't fix this, we sent people to the moon, we do all this other stuff, clean the damn lake. We wrote the letter, Patrick was involved with it, we started to get some, some response, and we stayed on it. So, when you guys come up here, don't think it's, you can, you can do so much good even beyond the borders of Oviedo. That lake is now gonna be clean, and this group can take some credit, because it lingered for years. Nobody cared, none of these other higher-elected officials were moving and shaking, until we shook, but Senator Simmons and Representative Smith, they are to be credited, as was Jason Broder, you know, before, before these guys, next year will be Senator Broder, and he's gonna be a good friend to the city, so that was really, you know, one of the things you can look back on and say you were part of cleaning up this lake when nobody wanted to, wanted to do it, so that's, that's awesome. Got that. Republic Services, I think Deputy Mayor just touched on that, stepping up, picking up the garbage, they are a great company. When you guys have to deal with them down the road, they have stepped up for years and years, okay? The storm came, we're gonna come out, we're gonna make other days, people are gonna come in on overtime, they are, they are wonderful to do that, that was good. One thing I, I had to notice, obviously, it's campaign season and everybody's watching. I take great comfort in watching what goes on in our city, and I have to tell you, some of our candidates, Randy, Judith, Emma, you, particularly because you were so active, giving out excellent advice that was well-researched, stuff people could use, not just throwing stuff out there that really was not good information, but we got a little preview of what we can expect, taking over for 34 years here, and I was very happy to see you guys out there, you know, talking to people, finding out what people needed, and, and putting out information. Now, I will tell you, just, just from me to you all, no one will ever do it better than Dominic did. He, he was there for years and years, putting out this information, but you guys, I saw some signs, and I said, wow, we're gonna, we're gonna be all right. So, take, be proud of yourself for doing that, because don't think that the citizens were not looking for the future leaders to step up in a time of crisis, which, which you all did very well, so good going there. The Bahamas, oh my goodness, we sent our prayers to the people in the Bahamas, like the mayor said, that could have been us, I mean, I thought it was gonna be us, but we'll do what we can to help them out.
Well, thank goodness you boarded up your house, because once you boarded your house up, it turned.
It was, it was funny, I called him up, I said, I just boarded up the house, and he said, I just bought a new chainsaw. Hour later, he calls me up, there you go, now we're good, because we did all that work, you know, it was kind of, kind of, kind of strange, but...
Three houses.
Did you board, too?
I boarded three houses.
Awesome.
The way I look at it, that's what insurance is for. I've done that before, I'm not doing it again.
No, and then, and then just finally, we're getting late, Mr. Colbert, we only got about six more meetings, so in case we don't see you again, I don't know if you'll cover Philani, he's usually here, but 14 years, you swore me in, in October 3rd of 2005, you've been here with us ever since, so if we don't, I hope we do, but if we don't see you, thank you, sir, for always keeping us straight, giving us great advice, it's been a pleasure. That is one of the classiest gentlemen you will ever find, ever, and I hope that all you new people get to work with Bill as well, so with that, I will turn it back to the mayor, and have a good night.
That's right, Bill, you swore me in my first time, too, way back, and that was a long time ago.
Did you say swear at you or swore you at?
Well, he probably did that, too, but, that was a little feistier back then, so, yeah, he might have swore at me, who knows? But it's, it has been a pleasure, Bill. And, you know, this law firm, guys, don't listen to the chatter, whoever gets elected, get to know them, because you're gonna find out real quick that these guys know what they're doing.